Start the Brainerd City Council. It's October 18th, 2021, and we'll call the meeting to order. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stunek.
Here.
Johnson. Pritchett.
Here.
Stengline.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
O'Day.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
And Bedeau.
Here.
Apologies, Mr. Mayor. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That'll be the last time you silence me.
The next agenda item is the approval of the agenda. We're looking for a motion to approve the agenda, but before we get that, there's a, it's really not part of tonight's agenda, but I'd like to make everybody aware of it. At the end of the meeting, we're going to adjourn this to a council workshop for the parking commission. It also says, "And market study continued discussion." When we get to that adjournment, we will, the market study continued discussion is going to be removed from the October 25th council workshop, okay? So everybody knows that. So now we're looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Pritchett, second by Stunek. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. We are underway. Item five is the consent calendar. This is a notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
So move.
We have a motion by Erickson.
Second.
Second by Pritchett. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, all right. That consent calendar is adopted. Next up, our council committee reports. We've got item six A, which is the Personal and Finance Committee Acting Chair Stunek.
Give me a second, I'm finding it.
Take your time, young man.
Okay.
Is this how you guys run things over there?
Hey, careful.
Seven-minute meeting tonight, so yeah.
Six of it was finding the items on the agenda.
Funny, real funny.
We all remember last time.
Can I start? No, I found everything.
Thank you.
We have four long, long agenda items. The first one is from our police chief Bestow regarding police hiring ratification. The motion out of committee was to affirm hiring Police Officer Bryce Johnson starting at L E L S step one rate of 28, 26 per hour with an effective date of October 11th, 2021, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Stunek, second by Stengline, to affirm the hiring of Officer Bryce Johnson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries, please proceed.
I have, I have something to say, like Gabe does. This brings us up to 24 licensed officers.
Thank you.
Oh, you're so welcome. The next agenda item is the approval of the 2022-2024 USW contract terms and wages. The motion out of committee is to approve the attached 2022-24 tentative agreement summary and the attached contract supporting the documents between the city and USW Union Hydro and adopt the attached resolution set.
We'll do that, we'll stop at the "and." We'll just do the first part, please, Chief, all right? We've got a motion by Stunek.
Second.
Second by Stengline to approve the attached tentative agreement. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, please proceed.
Okay, next one is to adopt the attached resolution setting the USW Union, Hydro Union wages for 2022 and 2024, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Stunek, second by Stengline, any discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that resolution is adopted, please proceed, Chief.
Okay, number three, enter into lease agreements prior to the 2022 budget adoption. The motion out of committee is to authorize staff to enter into agreements with Enterprise for leased vehicles in the proposed budget prior to the 2022 budget being adopted, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Stunek, second by Stengline, to enter into the agreements with Enterprise. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries, please proceed.
I do have a comment on this. The comment is, the reason we're doing it yet this year is because cars are getting harder and harder to get, so we're trying to get it going prior to the 2023, 2022 thing.
Thank you, appreciate that, Chief. Anything else?
No.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Okay, our last item tonight.
I think we voted twice on that one.
Yep, it's doubly in there.
We want to do that one more time.
Well, it's a lot of money, so we've got to make sure we got, you know.
Plus, all right.
Okay. The next, the next one is consulting agreement with Hildy, Inc. for O P E B S, whatever that is. Okay, the recommendation out of committee, staff recommendation would be to approve the authorization of signatures on the agreement for consulting services with Hildy, Inc. for fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $31,000 plus $500 for exhibits and approximately $800 to $1,000 for fiscal year 2023 services, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Stunek, a second by Stengline. My, Chief, my, my agenda says 3,100, not 31,000.
Oh, my, you're right, my fault, my bad, 3,100 plus.
Just started double, double checking. Now, do we want to hold off on this till Gabe gets back to tell us what we're doing wrong?
No, no, we'll do it.
We'll do it without him, okay. We have a motion by Stunek, second by Stengline to approve the authorization of signatures for the agreement for consulting with Hildy, Inc. for 2022. Any discussion? Nope. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I've got one quick comment.
That motion carries.
That would be discussion.
Get out of there. Okay, the city shares approximately 45% to 50% of the total cost. The rest is being picked up by the airport and BPU and other entities, just so you know.
Thank you, Chief. Anything else?
Nope, end of report.
Thank you, we will move on to item six B, which is Safety and Public Works Committee, a full committee this evening. Chairman Mike O'Day.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We had five items on tonight's agenda, and we added another for six. We added that at number one, and I'll start with that item. It is a event application. The motion was to approve the attached application under the conditions that the applicant requests traffic control one week prior to the event. All signs and banners are removed after the event completion, and that the applicant submit insurance for the event prior to the event taking place. And I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, second by Pritchett. Just so you know, if you haven't been, this is the Tricks or Treats Skateboard Event to be held October 31st in the City Hall Parking Lot, correct?
Correct.
All right. You didn't let, you didn't let us know that.
No, that's why we're on discussion.
Right on.
Right now, we're going to talk about it during discussion. I was just going to fill you in, it's, it is on Halloween from noon to 3:00 in the City Hall Parking Lot. This is the, what is the skate park group?
Lakes Area.
Lakes Area Skate.
Association.
Skateboard Association. It sounds like they're going to be putting on kind of some shows, and I don't know exactly what the plan is. Mr. Mayor, maybe you.
Sure, yeah, so this application has actually been filled out by myself on behalf of Community Action. This group is one of our fiduciaries, and they had set in an event application, the city had asked that Brainerd Community Action do that for them instead, so that it is under our umbrella. So we will be helping them host that event and then carrying the insurance for the event as well. And they plan on having some skateboard competitions, some lessons, and then just basically raising some awareness for what they are trying to do, which is raise funds to potentially have a skate park located in the Lakes Area.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the skateboard exhibition, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries, please proceed.
Next item was the, I'll just start with the motion. Was the motion to approve the final pay estimate as presented to Knife River Corporation in the total project amount of $1,157,089.82, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, second by Erickson, any discussion?
Yeah, this is just closing out a 2020 project. It was finished with just grass in 2021, but this is 19-10 Northeast Brainerd Resurfacing Project. And it was within $416.24 of a 1.5, or 1.15 million dollar estimate, so it's pretty close.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the final pay estimate for improvement in 1910, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries, please proceed.
Yes, ended here. Feel like, feel like Kevin over here right now, trying to find my spot. Next was a motion to approve the attached letter of intent submission and to further, and further, to allow staff to work on and submit the full application once the letter of intent is received by MINDOT and approved to move on to the full application in November, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by O'Day, second by Pritchett. Mr. O'Day.
Yeah, this is just part of the Safe Routes for Schools Initiative. There's seven and a half million dollars coming out. We're asking for $500,000 towards the safer routes initiatives at Harrison School specifically.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Tad.
So my day job with Region Five, this letter of intent actually comes to me, and so I'm going to, while I support this project, I'm going to abstain from voting. I'm also on the scoring committee that the application will ultimately end up on, so. I liked the layout, the application, I support the project fully, but I'm going to abstain.
Thank you, appreciate that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the letter of intent for safe routes to school, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries, Mr. O'Day.
Yeah, our next item was just a discussion, further discussion on downtown snow removal in Special Services District. We came to a conclusion afterwards that, at this point, for this winter, it's too late to reroute everything, too late to make any changes as of right now, especially for snow removal. We have had a couple owners reach out with their concerns at this point as far as downtown business owners, but we haven't heard from enough at this point to really make a drastic change on what we're doing with the, the snow removal. If we're going to make changes, they would likely happen next year for snow removal. It's just at this point, it's, it's too late to, to make those big changes. So that was just a discussion item we had, we didn't have a motion, and we just kind of left at that.
Thank you, anybody else have any comments on the snow removal? The only one that I had, Mr. Chair, is that we did receive another letter from another business owner. I don't want to say protesting, but preferring not, not to have this done. So it's certainly something I would consider next time it comes before the council.
Correct.
To revert to just normal city snowploing or let the downtown business owners handle it themselves.
Where the, where the discussion went was, there are issues with it, but we don't really have any solutions for those issues at this point. So the, the solution could be just plow it like a regular street.
Yeah.
But it's going to be messy.
That's the way we used to do it, plowing is messy.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I've owned a business on Highway 210 for 35 years.
Yeah.
It's, it's a messy operation, especially when you have to have it hauled away.
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
The next item we had was another discussion item regarding the streetlight policy that we're working on. Mr. Sandy sent out the streetlights policy, if anybody had a chance to read through it. Very interesting material. The one interesting part of it that I was interested, and we were interested in, was changing our, changing our decorative lighting, changing our standard lighting to decorative lighting. And we gave him further direction on where to go forward with specific types of lights. And yes, there's some pictures of them right there. So we just kind of told him what we liked and what we don't like. He's going to get some pricing for us to see if this is worth, worth doing and changing from our plastic gray streetlights to something a little bit better looking. And that was just a direction thing.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just wanted to ask, I did have Furt Faust, kind of our resident historian, send us some of the, what I guess I've always referred to as the Sheridan lighting that was commonplace throughout the city of Brainerd. Did you get a chance to see them?
We did, yeah, and, and that's.
Nope.
Not that one, not that one, that's a plastic one. But yes, we, we are looking at the black.
Well.
That, that would.
It's actually none of those, but up until recently, we had, we have pictures of the actual lights, not out of a book, of something similar.
Any of these would be.
My, my only thought was, was, and I made this comment. First of all, those plastic poles, I mean, it's the only thing that wants me to hope for a nuclear war, is that those get nuked. Those are the most horrid things I've ever seen, and I know they were $1.29 each and we got a deal if we bought them, but the concrete ones are so much nicer with the rock. And we also have a regular smorgasbord of lights throughout Brainerd by letting everybody who bought lights pick what lights they wanted to buy. And I'm so happy that you guys are hopefully going to standardize what we have for lights. I also understand that that light, which I think is an LED one, is probably the most efficient for street lighting. At least Tom Felton, Walt, the PUC guys, beat it into my head that it was, so I believe it did. Anyway, I just wanted to, I mean, I just thought, I hope you guys take a look at those, they were really cool.
What we're, I always got a question.
Got an email.
Yeah, so I did send out what the, the picture. I think what you're concentrating on, Kelly, is the pole type, the concrete pole, not the fixture on top.
Well, both, but.
The fixture on top is very, Sean, you want to go back to the four thing again? So it's very similar to the bottom left, Kelly. That's the, the, the lights with the concrete poles, that bottom left light is very similar to the ones that were on top of.
I would disagree, I'm looking at one on Jennifer's thing.
Oh.
That looks like something somebody put on their mini gasko pole.
There's literally millions of options, so I would welcome the council members to send those to me, and we can get as many prices as you want.
You did, you didn't get the ones because Jennifer got them.
We got the pictures, but we have to find something similar that they build nowadays, which is a task.
Find out who PUC sold them all to.
You want to put the old ones back up?
Yeah.
Wow.
There's a pile of them somewhere.
There's a pile of them.
They'd be somewhere. So basically what we directed, oh, there we go, yep. It's a hexagon.
Yeah, it's kind of a, it's kind, you're right, yeah, it's a hexagon acorn. Something the kids can break the glass out of.
Maybe we can further direct to look more into a hexagon acorn type of light. Can do.
That's just my vote, thank you.
So basically, we, we directed them to look into two different types of poles, one for highways, which would be taller, one for residential, which would be shorter, and then shop around for different lights. One of them, one of the poles being the concrete, another type being the black cast aluminum or, or metal type. So, moving on to the next issue, our final issue was the discussion of sober homes. This night, this meeting, we basically heard the opposite side of the story from what we heard at the last meeting. The Havercamps and their team, and as well as some, as some of their residents showed up and, and just kind of pointed out the positive things that they do and how they're trying to keep things, things clean. And we had a really good discussion with the group. So at this time, we're, we're not changing anything, we really can't change anything that we know of yet. And we just, you know, directed everybody to be good neighbors, and that's kind of where the discussion ended, so. That was the end of the meeting.
End of, end of. Any comments on sober homes? I just, again, I want to mention, did y'all get the 352,000 pages that Mr. Bruce Janowak?
Yeah, I, I did.
Okay, just want to make sure, so, you know, Bruce is confident we all got it, thank you. Now, anything else, Chairman O'Day?
End of report.
Thank you very much. Next up is item seven, which is unfinished business. Item seven A is a resolution adopting the assessments for the 2021 nuisance abatement. My understanding is we have at least one person, or three people, that wish to talk about their assessments. So before we make a motion, this is your time to tell us what you think of your assessments.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Just a correction, I think we have three that we are recommending be removed from the nuisance abatements.
Okay, so we, you want to make that recommendation right now?
And I see Paul.
So then those people don't have to come up and. So it's my understanding, from what Administrator Bergman just said, is there might be three people who have already made a case with staff, Mr. Sandy or Mr. Chansky?
I also want to point out that this is also for downtown snow removal, nuisance abatement, and downtown special services, not just.
Appreciate that, yep.
Yep.
So it's nuisance abatement, downtown special services, and snow removal. Anything else, Mr. Sandy?
Nope.
Okay. Mr. Chansky, talk, are you going to tell me about the three?
I got two, and then I believe Attorney Lingle has one.
Okay.
So the two I have, Mr. Chair, you both have in front of you. The first is a Mr. Steve Hammond received a proposed assessment for $125. The reason we're recommending that this one be waived is that the citation was actually issued to the previous property owner. He purchased the property in late 2020. You can see the special assessment research request dated 11/5/2020. What happened was BSNA wasn't set up right, the reporting wasn't set up right, so when we did the assessment search, this assessment was missed. He would have paid it at that time, otherwise, haven't had any other issues. This thing, this was for junk and debris, haven't had any other issues since he took over the property. So we are recommending that that citation be waived, and that is for PID 41040687. And then, do you just want them both of them, or do you want?
Yeah, I would like to hear them both, please.
The second we are recommending waiving is, we received a letter that's also in front of you from Mr. Alex Egley, I believe is how it's pronounced, at 924 H Street Northeast. This is one that Mr. Egley has been working with my staff on. He received a citation for a dilapidated roof. He has been working with my staff. What ended up happening, he got it in July, contacted my staff, we're giving him some time, and then how the, the assessment window is September 1st, August 31st. Hadn't heard from him on August 31st, so went on to the assessment rolls. He is actively trying to get his, his roof fixed, however, due to supply issues, labor issues. We're late in the season, he's just having no luck trying to find someone to fix his roof. So what we are recommending is waiving his proposed citations of $250, with the understanding that we will be back in the spring to ensure that the project is completed, and that is PID 41191713.
Okay, can you give me those PIDs one more time?
Yes, the first for Mr. Steve Hammond, that is 41040687.
Yep.
And the second one from Mr. Alex Egley, that's 41191713.
Okay, so if you're one of those two people, and you're here in the room or online, staff is already recommending that your assessments, and I don't remember what they were, one was for a roof, are already being waived. So unless you just want to come up and talk about it, you're good to go for this year, and we'll, like, we will look for a motion, and council could do differently to adopt the resolution less those two assessments. So if you're one of those people, Hammond or Egley, that, that's, you're off the list for now, maybe. Or at least staff is recommending that you're off the list. Once council votes, we'll have, I mean, the council's asked to vote on it, so.
And then Attorney Lingle has a third one.
Attorney Lingle, you have a third one.
Mr. President, Council, back in May, there was a citation issued to Cheryl Strand Peterson and her husband for a kennel, as you may recall, in town, and that was issued on May 13th, 2021. We subsequently had an abatement hearing on that issue, and during that hearing, it was deemed that the entire matter was resolved because the dogs, and in fact, the dog owners, all left town. They're no longer in the city of Brainerd, so it was deemed resolved and no further action was taken. The property owners, Ms. Peterson and her husband, were under the understanding that because they did appeal the citation, that that abatement hearing and the resolution took care of everything, not just the abatement, but also the citation. And were somewhat surprised to find their names on this assessment rule because they thought it had all been resolved. Technically, their appeal, the citation, was five days late. You have 10 days to file an appeal, they filed it five days after that. But again, they were under the understanding during the abatement hearing that everything was rolled into one and that everything had been resolved, and that it is no longer an issue because they left town. Based upon that misunderstanding, staff is recommending that the $250 citation be waived.
Perfect, do we have a parcel ID on that one?
Mr. Chansky can find that faster than I will.
Parcel ID is 41250684.
Perfect. Okay, so. The recommendation is to hold a public hearing for anybody who wishes to speak, who's being assessed one of these nuisance downtown snow removal or.
Downtown special services.
Downtown special services. So you've heard there's three that the staff is already working on, but council may not agree with staff, right? So you may still want to speak, but this is your chance, and if you're online, you'll also get a chance to speak. If you're online, you press star three, that notifies our IT director that you're interested in speaking. When I call your ID, then star six will allow you to speak, okay? But we're going to start with the people in the room, because they're here, and anybody who wants to come up and talk to us, including any of those three, talk to us about their assessments, now is your time. We will open the public hearing at 7:58, and it's your time to tell us what you think of your assessment. So please come forward, tell us your name, your address, and what you want us to know about your assessment. This is your chance. Please, come on forward, and thanks for coming forward. Thanks for being the first one, right? It's always tough. Tell us your name, address.
Brad Hicks, this is about my rental property, 801 Tenth Ave, Northeast.
Okay.
So during the COVID pandemic, I could not evict tenants and essentially had my hands tied for forcing them to do anything. So I don't feel like it should be assessed to my property when they're leaving messages, getting all sorts of nooses complaints.
Pretty simple.
Yep.
They were raising cane and you couldn't kick them out.
Yep.
Okay, I don't want to put words in your mouth. Brad, thanks for coming forward, any questions? Mr. Chansky, anything you want to add while Brad's up here?
No, I'm just looking for his list on the assessment, so I can give you the number in which he is being proposed assessed for, trying to find it.
Any questions, Brad?
Only question?
Yep.
Can you repeat the address again, 801?
801 Tenth Ave, Northeast. And the tenant has since gotten out and everything's cleaned up.
Mr. Hicks, is the property under your name or under an LLC?
Uh, under my name.
Under your name, okay, just trying to find it here.
Hang on one sec, Brad.
Mr. Chair, I, I do have it.
Okay, what's the parcel ID number? And the amount of the assessment?
Is $3,000. David, could you confirm that for me, please?
Okay, yep, I'm just trying to.
We're looking for it.
Page eight.
I, I do have a question for you. I, I do have a question for you, Brad. When you couldn't kick them out, and they were still making messes, did you contact City Hall like the number says on your...
Uh, I mean, I wasn't even getting these notices sent to my property.
Is your, is your address on your rental license incorrect or need to be updated?
So it was updated, but for some reason, um... We... Some, for some reason, it was under Elk River, Minnesota, and I've never...
Elk River?
Yeah, never lived there.
Oh, okay. How'd you get that one?
It was then crossed out and forwarded to my current address.
Thanks to whoever did that.
So the amount I have here, confirmed general for use had PID 41250701.
41191142. Should have it right on top of that, I think, Brad, does it?
I have one for Bradley Hicks of 41250701.
Well, you might have made our list twice, Brad.
Probably have.
You might be on here 10 times since you live in Elk River.
Is there, is one of them, did we do 10th Avenue, or is he, does he also have an infrastructure? We on the same page?
We only see the one.
Yep. There's one on page 168 of the packet, and one on one, page 185 of the packet.
You are on here twice. Well, anyway, thank you for your testimony. This is where it happens, where we're going to make a decision as to which ones we approve, and which ones we need to further look at and pull off.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else in the audience that wishes to make a statement about their assessment? Anybody at all? This is a public hearing, so this is your chance, okay? Then we're going to go to online. What's that?
They were getting up.
Oh, I apologize. That was because I was moved on. I thought you guys were just sitting there enjoying the...
Just enjoying the fun.
Please, tell us what you'd like about your nuisance abatement, downtown snow removal, or downtown special services assessment.
On the assessment service, Steve Hensel, 623 Laurel Street.
Thank you very much.
And my wife Lois. I would like to get, as I've, we've discussed, we're kind of late in this, getting to this, snow removal, the flower, the flowers and the garbage. We would like maybe ourselves and Lois to stay, but maybe get on the committee to help next year to discuss different ways we could do this. And one little thing in the garbage, Ed Ming's Jewelers does not throw stuff in the garbage. Our bottles do not go in the garbage. It's stuff from the shops.
It's public garbage.
It's beer cans, cups, cans from other, it's a city thing, not just our businesses. The apartments are probably the main, and the bars. In regards to the flowers, I really feel that parks should take care of that. That's a city thing, it's a beautification of the city, not just of us business owners, a few of us hanging in one little corner, again with the other businesses, maybe spread it out, or we talk to the parks about taking care of it. If the city can have an intern do it, I think we can get an intern for the parks and wrecks to do it too. They're good at it, that's what they do for a living. In regards to the snow plowing, we're not saying eliminate it, just throw it out the window. No, we, there's other ways to probably look at this, and to get a better system for everybody, not only us, for everybody. Our bus, most businesses don't open until 10, 11. If we can get a little closer, that's one thing we can look at in time, not starting guys at five, at four in the morning, maybe at six or seven. And I had some ideas constructive discussion on this for next year.
You heard, you heard from a couple, two business owners at the last meeting, do they understand if they would be assessed what the building owners are assessed, that the one would have to sell 500 cups of coffee extra, over and above, to pay these assessments? Does the other one understand she would have to sell 500-plus bath bombs over and above, which she normally sells, to pay these assessments? So these assessments are coming to building owners, which again...
Yep, now, I gotta, I gotta forewarn you, there's going to be an open forum where you can talk about this.
Right.
But right now, I have to save this space for the people who have been assessed.
Well, and we're being assessed, and that's why we're here.
I understand.
Because it's cutting down our business.
I understand.
And so the city has to understand, do you want a business, or do you...
I just wanted to keep you on target.
I got you.
So you don't talk about what other business owners do or don't know. We, we don't know that. Okay, in the room, before we move on to online, anybody else would like, and I'll come back to you while you, if you think about it a little bit. Online, Sean, we have some, one, okay? Jennifer, you're pointing over there at Paul.
I am, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I think Paul, Engineer Sandy has a question or a comment.
Okay, it's a public hearing. I really should let the public speak. We'll save him for afterwards.
Sounds great.
Fair enough. Okay, is that okay, Paul?
Yeah, I just, we need a clarification for the last one.
Jennifer got a new footrest, and she's like so excited. We're going to hold off, we're going to try and hold off on the staff got a chance to comment before the public hearing. We're going to try, and, and we can ask questions of the people who come up, but we really should stick to the public hearing. All right, online, star three, what number are you? It looks like the 09? Is that correct? 09, if you're with me, hit star six, and we'll let you talk about your assessment.
Hello?
Hi, who's this? Please state your name and address.
Cheryl Strand Peterson.
Hi, Cheryl. What you got to say about your assessment in three minutes or less, Cheryl?
Hi, Kelly, I'll be quick.
Thank you.
The reason that, the reason that this was filed late was because we had headed out of town on the 18th of May. The appeal was filed on the 28th, because we just intermittently, climate had come in and picked up the mail. I've only been back to get mail once at a funeral, just twice. Anyways, the appeal was filed formally, both the abatement and the assessment, appeal procedures were identical. So I filed them at the same time. I believe I sent it to all of the members and Mr. Chansky. At the same time, in the same email, we appealed the assessment, the abate, the threats, and the letters. It's all on one paper, one email. So when we went into the appeal that day at the meeting, that was kind of hectic and dramatic, we assumed that everything was covered. And I just wanted to make that clear, that if you look back at the email that I've resent, again, I believe a couple times to Mr. Chansky, everything is included in the appeal request. I just wanted to make that clear, that it was formally filed, and everything was included in that. That's why we, we thought, and assumed, and I guess you guys just maybe didn't look, you overlooked it, and you thought that it was just the abatement that was being appealed. No, it was everything. So I just wanted to make that clear. From the beginning, it was everything.
Thank you, Cheryl, and, and as you heard earlier, the city attorney has requested that your assessment get removed from this list and get re-looked at, so...
Right, right. I just wanted to make that clear. If you look at that, everything was included from the beginning.
This is your time. Thanks, Cheryl, we'll see you next time. Talk to you as soon as we decide here in about 10 minutes. Anybody else online? Anybody else? I see nobody. Sean, last chance here in the room, anybody that wishes to speak to their assessment? Ed Shaw, I believe we have already mentioned his, but we can mention it again. We received a letter, thank you, Paul, that we've already discussed, that Ed Shaw...
He's formally contesting his assessment.
This letter does not say that.
Yes, it does.
Does it?
It says formally objects to assessments for properties referred to for downtown snow removal and special services.
Thank you. Oh, I got it, all right. So we have a fifth written formal, uh, for, and what does he...
Snow removal and special services.
For last year.
Yep, for the hearing that's going on right now, yep, the 2020-2021 special services.
Got it.
Yep.
So is he complaining about the assessment, or about a penalty on the assessment?
He's, he's, so you can formally protest an assessment by submitting in writing prior to the hearing.
Okay.
So he's actually formally submitting a contestment to the assessment. And that's part of statute, and Mr. Lengel can, can cover that, but...
Mr. Lengel, we probably should, because there's two people in this room that didn't, either didn't know it or didn't do it. And I bet they would if they could. So what can we do? Or what should we do, since they've stood here three times to complain about the snow removal particularly, but the other two as well? And Mr. Sandy just said they needed to formally complain in writing. And I don't have that from them, but I know they just stood here and complained. Now, can we give them a pen and a cocktail napkin? Or can we get that after the meeting?
The, the notice of hearing does state that the, the formal objection needs to be in writing prior to the hearing. They can still come up and speak, and the council has...
Which they have.
The council has the authority to change their assessment based on their testimony tonight. But in the notice of hearing, it does specifically state that the, the formal contestment of an assessment needs to be in writing at the time of the hearing.
Well, so, okay, I have another question, but, as does Mr. O'Day. But we'll let Mr. Lengel talk about procedure first.
Mr. President, Council, so this is being controlled under Minnesota Statute 429.061, and it states that no appeal may be taken. As to the amount of the assessment, unless written objections signed by the affected property owner is filed with municipal clerk prior to the assessment hearing, or presented to the prescribing officer at the hearing. Period. So it's either before or now, or forever hold your peace.
Okay, I would count tonight as now. Mr. O'Day, what's the difference between a formal and a regular, what they've just done here, anyway?
So typically, what we've done is we can pull those assessments from the roll tonight. We can work with the property owners if we're directed to. So on the nuisance side, we typically, that $3,000 one, for example, we can pull that from the roll. David can do some research with that property owner before the next meeting, and then we'll either have another resolution which adopts that specific assessment at the next meeting, at the original amount, at a reduced amount, or waive it completely. So anytime we've had people come up previously, and speaking at a public hearing, we've pulled those out from the nuisance side, and worked with them for two weeks, and then come back at the next meeting. That's why we give ourselves a little bit of time.
So if we do pull you off the assessment rolls this evening, it doesn't necessarily mean your assessment is waived. It just means we're going to re-look at it, okay? So now... Attorney Lengel has more, yes?
Yeah, just as a point of procedure, if the council wishes to do that, look at it again or readdress this in two weeks, technically you have to adjourn the hearing, such as procedurally, if you go that route, just somebody make the motion to adjourn the hearing until the next meeting.
Can we approve the assessment rolls, less a certain number of them, and adjourn that to the next meeting?
Exactly, so the motion would be to approve the assessment roll...
Less these...
Less whatever the list is to be addressed at the next meeting.
Okay. Okay, anything else, the staff? So we're still in a public hearing. If you two would like to form, and I don't want you to do this, because, you know, we have to pay for this, but if you two would like to, but you've been here time and time again, and I appreciate that. Please come up and formally contest your election, your election, your assessment, if you'd like to. As, okay? And, and this just goes on the record, please state your name and address again, and just keep it simple. I formally protest, or whatever you protest.
Lois Hensel?
Steve Hensel, 623 Laurel Street.
We do protest our assessments.
The nuisance assessment.
Hang on one second, Mr. Lengel's got...
It does have to be in writing, so if you got a piece of paper there, put it in writing.
Do it before you, do it...
Sign it.
Okay, thank you guys for coming back up.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll get you a piece of paper and a pencil, I bet you Tony there can help you out. Thank you, and sign it and date it. All right, we're in a public hearing. This is an opportunity for anybody in the room or online who hasn't spoken to give us what you have to think about your assessment. Come on up.
So I don't have a...
Please come up to the microphone, tell us your name and address.
Sorry, my name is Becky Chisholm. I live at 1423 Pine Street. I don't have a nuisance assessment, but I had a city improvement.
Okay, that one you have to hold off.
Okay.
That's okay.
I don't want to miss...
We're glad you're here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, good.
That's okay, no, better to find out.
I want you to adjourn, and then I get kicked out.
We're going till midnight, Becky.
Oh, no, I got it.
Anybody else who, who hasn't spoken, who wishes to speak, who's in the room or online? I see nobody new, Paul, Sean, I'm sorry, not Paul, Sean. Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. So that was your chance to speak on nuisance assessments, downtown snow removal, and downtown special services. Now it's time, so we got Brad, the three that staff mentioned, and the one from the Hensels. That's five of them.
Ed Shaw.
And Ed Shaw, so there's six of them that have, what do you...
Gentlemen?
That's Brad.
Uh, that's Brad, I already mentioned him.
He needs a piece of paper and a...
Do we have a written objection from Mr. Hicks? We, we needed a written objection.
I, I never knew that, I don't think we ever had written objections, did we? Okay. Brad, you also got to do what the Hensels are doing, you can, you got your own paper. He's already on it. Okay, so you've got Brad, Hamel, Angler, Strand Peterson, and the Hensels, and the Shaws that have all requested to be re-looked at. Thank you very much, Brad.
Signed in triplicate.
Signed in triplicate, and in blood, like you wrote in blood. Due to unconstitutional eviction, Brad, he, okay. Thank you, Brad. Any questions from the council, because now one of you needs to make a motion? Well, we don't have to, but if we want to, um, adopt the assessments in some way, shape, or form, we have to make a motion. Anybody cared to take a stab? You've got six, one, two, three, four, five, six people that have asked to have their assessments re-looked at.
Mr. Chair, a question?
Yep.
So the, the motion potentially you're looking for is to approve these assessments less those six, pulling those six out to look at later.
And hold over those six for two weeks.
All right, so moved.
Motion by Erickson to adopt, or to hold the public hearing which you've done, and adopt the attached resolutions, adopting the assessments less the six that will be held over for two weeks.
And adjourn here, correct.
And, pardon me?
Adjourn the public hearing.
And adjourn for two weeks.
And to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson, is there a second? Second by Pritchett?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, um, well, I, I want to make sure that by six, whether we're counting people, because I know that Ed Shaw had three properties, and Brad, I think, had two.
To clarify, Mr. Hicks, he has one is a nuisance assessment, the other one is an improvement assessment.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chansky, but in the case of the Shaws, I am interpreting his letter to say all three of his. Okay?
And the motion too, as well.
And the, that's the way out, we'll clarify that?
Yeah, thank you, would include all three of Mr. Shaw.
If they qualify under the nuisance, downtown services, downtown snow removal. We're not hearing any road improvement assessments this evening. Right? Next, oh, yeah, as a matter of fact, we are next. So you don't have to wait long, Pippity. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. You've got that. Okay, thank you very much. Does that look good? Yeah, perfect. Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Minister Bergman, please call the roll.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion is adopted. So Brad Hicks, the Hamel, the Anglers, the Strand Petersons, the Hansels, and the Shaw's should all be getting with staff. Next, tomorrow? Soon. Staff, you'll get ahold of them? Okay, staff, we'll get ahold of you. Mr. Is it Hicks? You better, please, before you leave, come up, would you come get this right now? And just put your name, address, phone number, and email address on this. Sorry about that, but we, we better not be sending any more stuff to Elk River. But sometimes it happens, right? I don't, I'm not saying it was a mistake. Maybe we thought you wanted to live there, I don't know. These things happen. Phone number and email address. Okay. Next up was item 7B. This is a resolution adopting assessments. Improvement 19-19 Northwest Third Street and Jackson Street Reconstruction Project. It still says city engineer, but I'm gonna say it, Public Works. Are you in them still? I don't, I don't know anymore. Public Works Director Sandy, can you introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So in front of you tonight, we have a public hearing and a resolution in front of you in which adopts the assessments for the Northwest Third Street and Jackson Street Improvement Project. This project was constructed in conjunction with our Northwest Fourth Street project that is as a separate city improvement. In front of you tonight is also a formal appeal from the owner of a majority of the property of budding Jackson Street and Northwest Third Street from a Gustafson Properties of Brainerd LLC. The formal contestment is the first step in the process. I guess Attorney Langle can, can cover anything. I don't know if we necessarily need to adjourn the hearing if.
No, Mr. President, there's no reason to adjourn the hearing at this point. He's, they've submitted an official objection to the assessment. My understanding is, looking at the crowd, nobody's here to discuss the matter. So, well, the council could do one of the two things. Go ahead and pass the, or approve the assessment, we'll just move on. They'll appeal if they want to appeal. Otherwise, you can adjourn it till the next meeting and see if they show up to that to address the council. Given that they've already submitted a formal objection and they're not here tonight, it seems to me you can just go ahead and, and if the council desires to go ahead and approve the assessment, and then if they wish to appeal to District Court, they can certainly do that.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Sandy?
You'd still have to open the hearing and close it.
I'm gonna do the whole thing, just the way it's supposed to, and I'm gonna recommend we don't hold it, or hold it open for two weeks. And just, this is, this is proper public procedure. So, we are going to open the public hearing to hear testimony for or against proposed assessments on improvement 19-19. This is Northwest Third Street and Jackson Street. So that's what, that's the one we're gonna hear right now. Anybody who wishes to speak for or against project 19-19, it is 8:24, and the public hearing is open for anybody who wishes to speak for or against that project. Anybody at all? Anybody online wishing to speak on Jackson Street, star three raises your hand. Sean, anybody? No? Okay, then we will close the public hearing at 8:25, and we'll look for a motion to adopt the attached resolution, adopting the assessments as proposed for improvement 19-19.
So moved.
Motion by Pritchett, second by O'Day. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. Minister Bergman, please call the roll.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Now we're gonna move on to improvements 20-05 and 20-06. Public Works Director Sandy, anything you wish to add on those projects?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. So this was an improvement project in southeast Brainerd. It included streets like Chicago Avenue, St. Louis Avenue, Portland Avenue, Rosewood Street, southeast 15th, southeast 16th, Quinnt Street, Pine Street, and Walnut Street. We did receive one contestment in email form here prior to the meeting from Mr. Greg Bloom of 1119 13th Street, Brainerd, Minnesota. His objection to the special assessments of his property as this road was replaced 19 years ago, and it should last 30 years, were his exact words. That's the only formal contestment I have. Otherwise, staff would recommend just opening the public hearing and taking testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. So it is improvement 20-05, 20-06. It's Madison Street and the southeast Brainerd Construction Project. So if you're in that one, this is your chance to speak for or against that project, or your assessment.
I'm 20-06.
You're 20-06, perfect.
Okay, so.
See, I wasn't that long a wait.
Here I am again.
I, and you have to state your name and address again.
My name is Becky Chisholm. My address is 1423 Pine Street. My house faces 15th Street, so I don't know why I have a Pine Street address. Anyway, my dollar amount is incorrect, first of all. I did the math, it's off 13 cents. It's only 13 cents, but I'm also, I work 70 hours a week. I am one person. I own the house by myself. And I recently purchased in December, and I didn't know that this was gonna happen, so I did go on your website when I started seeing construction. And I got this off of your website, and it literally says that you were fixing gaps in current sidewalks, not taking out my front yard and putting in a whole sidewalk. So this is the machinery, and that's where my front door is. And I am assessed $2,865.93 for something I didn't know about. And this is this machinery, and that is my front door. It looks beautiful, don't get me wrong. But a heads up would have been nice. And according to your letter, I have 30 days to pay this without interest on something that took five months to do. So that's not very fair. I know that the interest rate is only $81, but it's the whole I'm one person type of deal. I have two jobs to make my ends meet, and I can't afford an extra $300 a year at this point. Anyway, thank you for listening.
Becky, can I just summarize?
You can have this if you like.
Yeah, we'd love that. Thank you. But I wanna summarize, because you kinda, you kinda hit about five different things, right?
Yep.
So one, and the part about you not knowing about your assessment, you know, we we can't help that your people before you didn't tell you. But it sounds like you think it's, was too big a project, that what was more than what you needed. It sounds like you, it's too much money. It sounds like you don't like the job the contractor did because they parked something right next to your house.
Which was running for an hour, which filled my house up with exhaust, with nobody around. That's also pictures.
Are you making an insurance claim?
No, I mean, I'm not, I just.
I mean, that would be the next thing on that, right?
Right, but that's not the route I, why I'm here.
And what was the other one?
Um, my dollar amount is incorrect, granted.
Oh, and the dollar amount's incorrect by 13 cents?
Correct, that's only 13 cents. On your website, it did not say that you were adding new sidewalks. It says that you were fixing gaps in current sidewalks.
Right, that's the scope of the project.
Right. But then you took out my lawn with, I mean, you can see, I could probably reach out for my deck and slap whoever's on the side. I wouldn't do that. But, but, I mean, a heads up would have been nice. And granted, I did just purchase the property, you know, in November, moved in in December, but I don't know what the.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood all, all of your, all of your complaints. Okay, thank you.
But you're doing a wonderful job, and it does look nice, but.
Well, thank you.
Again, I can't afford that.
Okay. Please come forward to state your name and address, and what you'd like to tell us about this, these assessments or projects.
Dexter Hanson, 1016, 1012, and 1008 Rosewood Street. My main letter that I got from you guys was from 1008 Rosewood Street, which I got from a land auction through the county this last fall. And the county failed to let me know that they were gonna do a resurface job on the road. And then I have to talk on behalf of, my grandfather was passed away, but my mom inherited the property and then went crazy, so she can't legally sign it over. So I'm taking care of 1016 and 1012 Rosewood Street as well. And Mr. Erickson came over. He looked at my property. You guys heard me talk three times when you were just putting this up in the air. The only spot that really needed to get redone was from the city hitting my curb with the snowplow. Everything else, there are way worse roads all around the area that could have easily been redone. 11th Street, why deal with the dead end roads? I'm the last three properties on a dead end road. I absolutely think it's BS that you don't think about the actual main drag. It doesn't have stop signs. It doesn't have anything. You need to drive right through that. And it's drive down at once. But you wanna take my dead end road for absolutely no reason, replace the stuff, when the only thing that should have been replaced was the curb that the city plow took out. So I don't know if I have to write something to contest the assessment on everything, but.
I, I don't know. We'll get the answer to that tonight.
And then also, to back her, you heard me talk on behalf of that sidewalk going in for Harrison. My nephews live 1519 Pine Street, another one of my mom's properties, and I agree with her. I mean, you guys ripped up, the city ripped up a lot of stuff, and that sidewalk's useless. It's just gonna get a whole bunch more riffraff going through there. I'm sure you guys heard me say riffraff many times in the last meeting. But already, I have broken beer bottles on my road. I have teenagers smoking pot in my trees right off the trail, because now they have this nice road that they never would have looked down before. I have had to put more no trespassing signs up. And 11th and Quince, I almost had the cop, had to call the cops on my way over here, because there are about 20 different teenagers that I've never seen before that were walking towards Rosewood, and I get them on camera walking in front of my house almost every day. But tonight was the first time they were actually yelling at me. They're like, oh, why don't you keep on the road? It's like you're in the road. I had to drive around you. But that was my concern in the first place, was this whole project was gonna get more people coming past my property. And now I have to deal with the beer bottles, and I have to deal with these kids coming through. And stuff like that really wasn't a problem previously. Anything else for me?
It's your turn.
Well, I think I said pretty much everything I needed.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Oh, I guess. Do I need to put in a formal objection to this?
If you, yep, you wanna contest your assessment and.
Yes, you have to. Becky, did you get that? If you want to formally contest your assessment, the dollar figure, you have to put it in writing.
Could I write it on the documents I gave you?
Absolutely, you can.
Perfect. Oh, thank you.
Here's Brad's. All right, we're in a public hearing on improvements 20-05 and 20-06 Madison Street and southeast Brainerd. Please come forward if you've got something you'd like to say, either for or against the project or your assessment. Anybody at all? Last call. All right, we will close the public hearing on these two projects. I have a procedural question, and I don't know if it's Mr. Sandy or Mr. Langle. Unlike the downtown ones where we pulled some out to be relooked at, procedurally, is that appropriate on a street project? I, I don't, yeah, it could be. So you could make a motion to withdraw those two and hold them over for two weeks again, if you choose to. Or you could approve the assessments as is, or you could do something different. This is where you get to make a decision. So we've got a resolution before us on improvements 20-2006. We'll look for a motion, and then we'll discuss the motion. Anybody wish to make a motion? Mr. Pritchett?
I'll make a motion to adopt the attached resolution adopting the assessments as proposed improvements 20-05 and 20-06, and recommend that the two written complaint, or written, what do we call them?
Objections.
Objections be given to staff and come back in two weeks.
So hold those two over.
Those two over again.
Second.
We have a motion by Pritchett, a second by Stunek, to approve the assessments, the attached resolution, holding out the two objections. Mr. Langle?
And so part of that motion be that you're adjourning the hearing until the next council meeting?
And adjourn the hearing on the other, on the two held out to the next council meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Bado.
I, I just wanna make sure we have clarification on it. Sidewalks are not assessed, correct? The sidewalks were not, okay, a part of the assessment. I just wanna make sure that we're aware of that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that clarification. Any further discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none. Minister Bergman, please call the roll.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion is adopted. Okay. So I would expect you two should get with staff fairly soon, okay?
I'll have two different phone numbers for you guys.
Elk River? All right, next up. Thank you for coming. Thanks.
Thanks, Dexter.
All right. Next up is item D, which is a call for applicants. First up is Mr. Mayor Bado.
Forgot what we were doing. I pulled a Stunek. The following applications are available at our website, www.cia.brener.mn.us. We are looking for members for the following committees. We have had these openings for quite a while, so please reach out to us at the city. This is how we get things done, and for everyone that always says, I wanna get involved, this is how you get involved. So the following, we have terms expiring 12/31 of said year. Cable TV Advisory Committee, one term expiring 2022, one term expiring 2021. Charter Commission, one term expiring 2022. Housing Redevelopment Authority, one term expiring 2022. Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeal, three terms expiring 2022. Transportation Advisory Committee, one term expiring 2022. And the following for the Economic Development Authority will expire on. And the following for the Economic Development Authority will expire on nine seven of said year, one term expiring twenty twenty-seven, and one term expiring twenty twenty-six.
Thank you, Mayor Bedeau, and as council president, I have one committee, the Police and Fire Civil Service Commission, looking for one volunteer for one term to expire twenty twenty-three. And the ad hoc committee's Water Tar Committee has two positions available. Item eight A is the.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, I believe we need a vote on the two, uh, two twenty oh five and twenty oh six.
Resolution.
Resolution.
Never voted.
Okay.
Who made the second? Pritchett made the motion?
The motion was made by Pritchett. The second was made by Stunek, correct, Kevin?
Correct, Kelly.
And the vote was unanimous, right? I'm pretty sure.
Done by roll call?
Yeah.
Didn't we roll call it?
We did.
We did. I'm pretty sure we did.
It's a full moon.
I said.
We can do it again.
We can do it again. It was unanimous, but just.
That's fine. That's fine. I, I don't know how we missed it.
Tony, you're good.
Happens.
Tony's good. You know, we either vote on him not at all or twice. No, thanks, Connie, because it, it could have happened.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, item eight A, dangerous dog hearing, uh, submitted by Jennifer Bergman. Administrator Bergman, please give, bring us up to speed on this item.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. We did receive a request on October eighth from Angela Blakemore for a hearing regarding her dogs Ava, Brownie, and Wendy, um, who were designated as dangerous dogs by our Animal Control Officer pursuant to Brainerd City Ordinance nine hundred point two five. Uh, the city administrator shall place the matter before the city council at its next regular council meeting, which is tonight. Um, attached in your packet, you do have the, a request for the hearing and the section of the city ordinance that pertains to the regulations of dangerous dogs. Um, in addition, the report by our Animal Control Officer, Mike O'Brien, um, and the completed dangerous dog hearing request forms for all three dogs. Um, and with that, um, Mr. Chair, I would turn it over to either Attorney Langle or to our Animal Control Officer, Mike O'Brien.
Okay. We'll let both of you give, give a shot at it. Attorney Langle, you're first.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly in terms of procedures. So the animals already been declared dangerous by the Animal Control Officer, Mr. O'Brien. Under the ordinance, what this is, is an appeal from that designation by the owner. So the owner may present evidence in opposition to the designation of the animal as dangerous. Following that information, uh, Mr. O'Brien, uh, can present, uh, evidence to the council that supports the determination that the animal is dangerous. Following whatever back and forth there is, um, or other information that the council may wish, uh, the council will then make a determination as to whether the animals are in fact properly characterized as dangerous. And if so, what then to do with the animal. So that's the process in a nutshell. And with that, I would have the council turn it over to the animal owners to present their evidence in opposition to the designation.
Perfect. Appreciate that. So we'll start with the dog owner is here. Please come forward, state your name and address, and what you, what you asked for the hearing for.
Angela Blakemore and five fifteen.
Guess they had a little closer, thank you.
Angela Blakemore, five fifteen Second Avenue, Northeast Brainerd.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm asking for the hearing because they said my dog is, was non-pro, non-provoked. That this happened, you know, it was being herded and bit, ankles bit at, and then that's why the fight happened. So this other dog was hurting my dogs, you know, chasing after them, biting at their ankles, and then it turned into a fight. And so they say it's non-provoked. My dogs are nice. They're good dogs. They've never gotten, they've never killed anything. So, and I wasn't there when it happened. Um, Thomas was walking them when it happened, so.
Thomas, what's your name and address?
Thomas Shutt, uh, one twenty-six, twenty-seven Lower Sullivan Road, Pillager. And I've, I've known these dogs as long as Angie and Nathan have had them. And, uh, it's Ava's mother, twelve years old, her daughter Brownie and Wendy, four years old. And I've been taking them on this walk by the old potlatch, you know, when they got those two ponds in there. I've been taking them back and you got, you got the trees here and you got the fence. So I've been walking them. That's my walk maybe once a week, sometimes twice. But the reason I walk them, 'cause I'm on the country and whatever, and they need to get some exercise. But usually when I, when I start this situation, I start, here's a fire hall, so I drive down slow, make sure nobody's out there walking their dogs. I don't want no confrontation and this and that. And that very day, there was two young girls walking. And I, I slowed away. I, I got good eyes. I did not see a dog. And they were about, they were about fifty yards, if not farther, from the grove of trees. You guys all know what I'm talking about out there? But anyways, um, so I drove down to the end by the trees, and I let, I let the dogs out. They're a boxer and Labrador. Mama's a full-blooded boxer, and the other two is a boxer and Labrador, the daughters. And, uh, anyways, I let them out and they go running right, right into the woods, tree woods, right into the woods. So then I start walking, then I heard some growling, like, then I, the girls were right, I go, you girls don't have a dog, do ya? They did, they had, it was in the woods. And let me stop, let me, let me back up for a second. When I took Ava, the mother, home, Angie said she had bite marks on the back of her legs. And the dog that these girls had was a collie, it was a collie mixed dog, which is, which is a sheltie collie, and it's, it's a mixed herding dog. And it was only, it was this big. So usually a small dog is scared to death when you see the other dogs, so. Got, got, I mean, if, if it would have changed, I would have loved to seen the dog run out of the trees. But when the girls told me they had a dog, I run into the woods and Ava had a hold of it. And I, I was, uh, it's something I really don't wanna recall and back up and all that other stuff, 'cause these dogs aren't violent. This dog was about the size of a big raccoon. And, uh, I've, I've, these, they've got into porcupines. Mom and the girls have got into porcupines and the skunks in the woods, but I, uh, you folks don't know nothing about what it's like in the situation. I wish I could change it all, 'cause the girls, you know, they're screaming and hollering and, and everything else, but it's, uh, it's a provoked situation that I, I will never, I will actually between, uh, between, I will never go back there and walk nobody again. 'Cause it was a situation. I'm, I'm a foreign boy, so I know what, I grew up in North Dakota, so I know all about animals. I've been animals my whole life. And I know, I know violence when I see it. These dogs are very well, they've been out. They live in, they live in northeast, northeast Brainerd here. So the dog catcher dude, they've been, they've been caught, and I paid plenty of money to the, to the impound place to get them out, you know? And, uh, it's not even about the money. It's, it's a situation, you know? I just paid you, I just paid the city, huh? But you know what? It is what it is. It's water in the bridge. I just wish I could take it all back. Because it's, be honest with you, 'cause the girls were probably fifteen, sixteen. And me myself, right now in this time of my, if I see, if I see, I, it, it, you don't forget stuff like that. You know what I'm talking about, guys? And girls, you don't forget stuff that's happened in your life. If I could backtrack it, I would. I just want this, everybody to know. I know these dogs are not dangerous. Any dog, if it's provoked, and you know what? I'll tell you what. When this happened, nobody was there but God watched it all. So when she told me about the bite marks on the back, 'cause I was just thinking, you know, the dogs are in there, and when you're in the woods, if something's wild, they're gonna go after it. But then when the bite marks on the back legs, but it is what it is. So I know they're not dangerous dogs. They're good dogs. And be honest with you, I am not gonna, I probably, I, I will not walk them again in the city of Brainerd. I live out in the country, so. I just, that is what it is. It's water in the bridge. But these are not dangerous dogs. So some other. I don't know what it, it all turned out, but it is what it is.
Tom, Tom, Tom?
Yeah, Tom.
What happened to the collie?
Passed away. She died.
As a result of this incident?
Oh, yeah.
Were any of the dogs on a leash?
No.
Okay. Anybody else wanna speak on this? Yeah, come on up, state your name and address.
I'm Nathan William Scott. I live at five one five Second Avenue. And, uh, I'm also partial owner of the dogs, and I just wanted to let you guys know that my dogs aren't dangerous. If they were dangerous, I definitely would take the first, uh, the, um, needs to eliminate the dog, but the dogs aren't dangerous by any means necessary. Um, you guys have another city council meeting on the third, right? Beginning of the month. If you guys were to label them dangerous, I'd like the chance to bring them up in front to you guys and show you the dogs first. Because they're really good dogs, and this incident happened, and I don't know what to say about it, but my dogs are really good dogs. And we gave, I bottled that Brownie. I mean, they, they're not dangerous dogs, and that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for testifying. Anybody else before I turn it over to Mike? Hearing none. We'll hear from our city dog inspector.
Dog catcher dude.
Dog catcher dude. I have already, I'm sorry. I already closed your part. You can submit anything you want in writing after this. Okay, come on up, Mike.
Today I emailed a written statement from the dog owners to Jennifer. I don't know if she, she gave that to you guys. I, I have a copy. I can give it to you right now. Okay. I also have some photos I'd like to give you. They were probably not appropriate for the package, um, to be like up on a big screen.
Okay, it, hold on on the photos. Does anybody not wanna see the photos? Slide your chair back. You don't wanna see the photos. Slide your chair back.
What are the photos of?
They're gonna be photos of the.
Of the dog.
Of the dog.
Written statement.
Where are we?
So we have, uh, two photos that the girls submitted, um, to me, just friendly photos of the dogs.
Okay.
And this is the dog in their yard and in a vehicle.
These are all easy to look at.
You're okay, Dave.
One photo of a bite wound. The girl, uh, the oldest sister is eighteen. She got bit a couple of times. And, and these are a little bit, um, not appropriate photos, but that's basically what happened to the dog.
Okay.
Okay, and that's all I have, and Jennifer has a statement.
We'll send them your way if you.
I asked the girls if they wanted to be here. One is fourteen, one is eighteen, and they were both somewhat traumatized, and, and they did not wanna be here. They don't live in the city. Um, they don't live in the city limits. One of them is going to CLC, and she's living with her aunt outside of town. I made some notes because I've been super busy and I didn't wanna forget anything, but basically on the twenty-eighth of September, I received a call that, uh, three dogs had killed another dog. I didn't, wasn't able to respond to it for a couple hours. We had parent teachers conferences, so I was, I was at my kid's school. But when I came down, I went straight to the house of their grandfather, which is on Fifth Avenue Northeast, and, and viewed the dog. So the girls were at their grandfather's house, and for the same reasons, Thomas walks the dog i- in that same area. They, they were walking their dog. It's a big open area. There's a bunch of trees. They like to walk the dog there. She likes to run around in the woods and, and they take her off the leash. Um, so basically, she was in the woods for a few minutes, and then they started hearing some squealing and, uh, like obvious sounds of pain. And right at that same time, Thomas approached them and said, hey, do you guys have a dog? Same, same story Thomas did. They said they did. They all ran after, they all ran in there. And by all accounts, I mean, the girls' accounts were, um, Thomas described it to me as the three dogs going after a raccoon. This dog is a nineteen pound, was a nineteen pound sheltie, not necessarily a herding type dog. She's not a border collie. She's, she's a miniature collie type dog. So they came up on the scene. Three dogs were going after their dog, and it, it was obviously violent. You see the photos. So the oldest sister, they're, the two are sisters, sorry. The oldest sister is eighteen, and she weighs maybe a hundred pounds. So Thomas was trying to separate them. She grabbed a hold of one of, one of, uh, Thomas and Nate and Angela's dogs and was trying to pull them back. And they just could not separate these three dogs off of, off of the, Lizzie, the little dog. And Thomas told me he's, he's a fit guy. He taught boxing, and he struck one of the dogs extremely hard, and it still didn't faze him. The girls, one of the girls, the oldest one, had one of the dogs by the back legs, couldn't separate them, then reached up, grabbed her dog by the chest, and as she was pulling it away, the other three ripped, ripped her out of her arms. And within a minute, she was obviously deceased. In the one girl's statement, um, she stated that even after she was clearly dead, two of the dogs continued to attack her. Thomas was able to pick the dog up. Is that not the statement?
It is.
Okay.
I was wondering if you wanted to read it.
If you want me to read their statement, I can read it.
Oh, I think you should.
Okay, I'll, I'll finish, I'll finish mine, and then I'll read their statement, yeah. So even after she was clearly deceased, two of the dogs continued to attack her. Thomas picked the dog up, the dead dog, and was carrying it out to the road towards his van. And, um, then he then put his dogs in the van. And one of them jumped out of the van, came up to the girls, not necessarily in aggressive manner. They didn't come up to the girls in an aggressive manner. Thomas was able to secure it and then bring those dogs home, and, and he did bring the, uh, the deceased dog back to the grandfather's, and he wrapped it up in a tarp form, so the girls never saw it after that moment. The next day, it was really, it was getting late, so I was able to speak with Thomas on the phone. The next day, uh, they were not able to prove that the dogs, um, were currently vaccinated for rabies. Lizzie, the deceased dog, did have a current rabies vaccine. Um, these three dogs, they weren't able to prove it. I spoke to the veterinarian where they went, and it was clearly expired. So as per Brainerd City Code, we seized all three dogs and held them on a ten-day quarantine. Um, the, the day after that, we did a little more research, found out they definitely, um, did not have the rabies vaccine. And the very next day is when I, where we provided the paperwork to Angela, uh, declaring all three dogs dangerous dogs. That's really about all I have. I mean, on, on the eleventh of October, Nathan and Thomas met me at the shelter, and we, we, uh, released the dogs to them then to be held until tonight as, you know, in a, in a proper enclosure or else to be leashed and muzzled at all times. And I can, I can read every statement.
Before you read that, go ahead and take that. Would you just tell us what happens to these three dogs if we uphold the dangerous dog? Mr. Tansky or Mr. Lang?
That, that's up to you guys, but Mr. Langle can, can better explain that.
Mr. President, Council, so under the city code, um, if the, if the council finds that the dog does meet the definition of a dangerous dog, which includes the killing of a domestic animal, um, then it will order the owner to deliver said animal to the Animal Control Officer for the purpose of euthanizing said animal, unless the owner provides an alternative proposal acceptable to the city council, which may include the permanent removal of the animal from the Brainerd City limit. Uh, there are, in the following section of nine hundred point two seven, some danger, dangerous animal requirements. If the council does not order the destruction of the animal, the council may, as an alternative, order any or all the following. And there's A through E, talking about proper enclosures, uh, posting of signs, liability insurance, minimum of three hundred thousand dollars. Um, must be muzzled and restrained at all times when outside the enclosure, and any other additional requirements under state law. So there are your options. You can have euthanized, removed from the city, or, uh, enforce or put into place a number of requirements that are set forth in your code.
Thank you. So I hope you all heard that, because that's gotta be part of the motion. Okay, please, if you would, read the statement from the dog owners that was deceased.
Yeah, so this is from the oldest sister. Um, she's eighteen years old, going to school at CLC. She said, we, we had Lizzie ever since she was a puppy. She went through training classes as a puppy and was well-socialized. We often brought her to dog parks when we lived in Plymouth and to a dog care center called up, or called Pup Town for day camps. She got along well with other dogs. I would describe her more as a timid, I would describe her as more timid towards other dogs as they typically came up to her rather than the other way around. Her favorite time was when she could go into the woods and smell and look for squirrels. She never wandered far away and always came back after a few minutes. She wasn't one to ever chase dogs or start a fight. She was a happy playful pet. On Tuesday, September twenty-eighth, when my sister and I took Lizzie for a walk at a field off Mill Avenue in Brainerd, we let her run into the woods and smell and explore. Lizzie was in the woods by the field when I heard her begin to scream. At the same time, a man came up to me and asked me if I had a dog. I said. I said I did. We all ran to the noise. We saw three dogs attacking Lizzie. One dog was biting her on the stomach, the other was biting her on the head, there was also a third dog attacking Lizzie. I tried to pull the hind legs of one of the dogs, but it was a big and heavy dog and kept going back to attack Lizzie. Then I tried to get Lizzie by the front side, but the dogs kept attacking her, and, and I could not pull Lizzie away. Then Lizzie stops, then Lizzie stopped struggling and died. The black dog stopped attacking, and the black dog is the one named Wendy. The black dog stopped attacking Wendy after Lizzie died, but the other two dogs kept attacking, so the guy continued to try to pull the dogs off. The guy was finally able to pick up Lizzie, and he carried her out of the woods. The other dogs followed him. The guy put his dogs into the van, and one of them jumped out of the van and went towards the guy and me, so the guy put him back in the van. I was covered in blood on my arms, shirt, legs, and sliders. I called my grandpa, and he put Lizzie in the trunk of his car. We called the police and animal control to report what happened." Um, I would also say that she stated that she brought Lizzie to this doggy daycare called Pup Town in Plymouth. I spoke with the owner of Pup Town, and she had recently bought that business, and so she doesn't have any personal experience working with Lizzie or, or this family, but she was able to look in the notes and, um, confirm that Lizzie did in fact come there multiple times. And she told me that if Lizzie had been aggressive or a problem dog in any way, there would have been something in the notes, and there was nothing like that. As far as, um, one of these three dogs, and to be clear, we're talking about three separate dogs here, um, that, that we declared dangerous. Um, as far as one of them having bite wounds on its lower legs, these dogs have multiple older scars as well. They certainly didn't come from Lizzie, they're healed. And we have no way of knowing, you know, when there's three dogs attacking one dog, they could easily have been self-defense wounds. I mean, if they came from Lizzie. Uh, we don't know that there were wounds received from Lizzie in an aggressive manner before the attack. I mean, like Thomas said, nobody was there. Nobody actually seen the start of this. We only see the end.
Any questions of Mike? Any questions of Mike? Thank you. Okay, so we've heard testimony from the dog owners and representatives, representative. And now, the procedure is to first of all affirm or deny staff's recommendation of these three dogs, or you could separate them if you want to, but the recommendation is on all three dogs, that they are in fact dangerous or are not. And then you heard Attorney Langill outline three things based on our code as to what we could recommend happen to them. So, any questions of staff? Then we'll look for a motion. Mr. O'Day?
So if you, if you just simply enforce the, what is this under? Uh, an ordinance or city ordinance? If we just simply enforce it and declare the do, three dogs dangerous, they automatically would need to be euthanized within ten days? Is that what I'm reading?
Member O'Day, so the ordinance reads that if the council determines the animal's dangerous, it will then order the, order the owner to deliver the animal to the ACO for the purposes of euthanizing said animal unless the owner provides an alternative proposal acceptable to council, which may include the removal of the animal from the city limits. Or the next section talks about, uh, the council may, as an alternative, order any of the following, and that's when you get into the whole, you keep them, but you have liability insurance, you've got to maintain a proper enclosure, you have to muzzle the dog, et cetera, et cetera.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes, please.
So would this be two separate motions?
Yeah, it would be helpful if, if the first motion would be to declare or not declare the three animals dangerous, and then following that motion, if it's declared dangerous, then the council decides what to do with the dangerous dog.
Thank you. Mr. O'Day?
So I don't think anybody on here joined up and, and volunteered their time to do something like this, to declare dogs dangerous or, or euthanize dogs. I don't think anybody wants to make that decision. But the other side of the equation is somebody lost their dog, and it happened, you know, it's terrible. And maybe it's nobody's fault, but if you just ignore the fact that it happened, then, then we didn't listen to the other owner either. I don't want to put down any dogs. I don't see any problem with, um, giving the opportunity for another option, but if we just allow the, the dogs to be here, and they somehow get out again, and something bad happens again, well then, now it's on us. So I would support, you know, I, I think you have to declare them dangerous. They did kill another dog. But I'd be totally open to allowing you guys to find some other place for them to be.
Got a motion?
Yeah, but really.
I will make, I will make a motion. I'll make a motion to declare the dogs dangerous dogs.
Okay, let's stop there.
Okay.
We have a motion by O'Day, second by Pritchett, to uphold the dangerous dog designation. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So now, what to do with the dogs? The, you've heard the ordinance twice now from Mr. Langill. So would somebody like to make a motion as to what to do? Can't talk now. You had your chance. I apologize, it's just, otherwise we'd be here all night. Yep, go ahead, Mr. O'Day.
I would make a motion to, I'd make a motion to enforce the city ordinance regarding dangerous dogs and allow for, uh, the owners of these three dogs to come up with reasonable, um, accommodations, including removal of the ci, from the city limits of, of Brainerd.
Uh, that's an odd motion.
I know.
You can't do it that way. I'm going to outlaw the motion. Either they have to take them out of the city limits, and when, and keep them out, or not.
Okay.
They're not making any reasonable accommodations.
Yeah, that was bad wording.
We're not moving Grandma to a home.
Right. I would motion for the owners of the dangerous dogs to remove the dogs from the city limits within the next week, uh, keep the dogs out of the city limits, uh, and provide proof that these dogs have a different home outside the city limits.
Okay.
Does that make more sense?
Much more direct. Thank you. We have a motion by O'Day, second by Pritchett. Any discussion? Mayor Bedell?
I just have a question of, uh, of the lawyer. Um, excuse me, Joe. Uh, the lawyer.
Blame me for that one.
I apologize. Um, there's still stipulations that follow this now that they have been deemed dangerous, correct? Regardless if they're in the city limits of Brainerd or not, there will still be stipulations placed upon the dogs?
Well, Mayor, if, if the dog, if the dog is ordered to be removed from the city, then, and this should be clarified to be part of the motion, that if these dogs are found back into the city, they are subject to immediate seizure by animal control and would typically then be subject to euthanization if they're found back in the city.
I can't, I can't, not unless somebody asks you a question. And I apologize, we have a motion and a second.
I can just clarify.
I know you can. You can do all kinds of things. But he asked a direct question with a motion and a second of the attorney. I can't let you speak, I can't let these people speak, I can't go drag people in off the street to speak. I know you all want to speak, but you all had your time, including Attorney Langill. The only reason I had to let him speak is because he was asked a question.
The lawyer.
The lawyer. Okay, and I'm not going to ask Mayor Bedell if he's got anything else to say, because all he does is ask questions.
That's right.
All in favor.
I forgot him, and that was a good move, and then, okay, we have a motion by Mr. O'Day, a second by Mr. Pritchett, to give the dog owners one week to remove it, and then, please to clarify.
Remove all three dogs.
To remove all three dogs and.
Provide proof of.
Provide proof, and if they're ever found in the city of Brainerd, they will be picked up and euthanized.
Yes.
Correct?
Amended, yes.
Amended, okay, seconded?
Yes.
Okay. So that's the motion. Any comments on the motion? I will make one comment. I will vote against this motion. I think these dogs should be euthanized immediately. I'm sorry. I, I just don't think if that man can't control them, what's the next little girl going to do? And I do not want that. And if, how are they going to keep them out of the city of Brainerd when they couldn't keep them off the other dog? So I'll vote against this motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Aye. That motion carries. So you have a week to provide proof. I don't know what that is, but Mr. O'Day has left it up to you, to city staff. Okay, next up is item B. This is a resolution declaring costs to be assessed, ordering preparation of proposed assessment, and ordering a public hearing on proposed assessments. So, staff is recommending the adoption of the attached resolution, which declares the cost to be assessed, preparation of the proposed assessment, and sets a public hearing on the proposed assessment for November first, twenty twenty-one, at seven thirty PM. I presume that's the council meeting. Mr. Chansky, anything you'd like to add before I ask for a motion?
Nothing that's not in the packet.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the attached resolution? Motion by Stunek, is there a second? Second by O'Day? Any further discussion? Hearing none, Minister Bergman, please call the roll.
Stunek?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Stengline?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, that motion is adopted. Next up is the public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. Time limits may be imposed. Me too. Okay, anybody else? Anybody? Anybody online? Thank you, Mr. Strong. Then we will close the public hearing at nine thirteen and move on to staff reports. We'll start over here at HR Director Chris Schubert.
Just to let you know, um, for the next council meeting, there will be a recommendation to dissolve our civil service commission. Um, this was discussed at their last committee meeting, or last commission meeting, um, and I'll have more information, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of a heads-up on that.
Thank you. Anything else? Attorney Langill?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Community Development Director Chansky?
Nothing for me, Mr. Chair.
Public Works Director Sandy?
Nothing to report.
Finance Director Hillman? Okay. GIS IT Director Strong?
Nothing.
Chief Bestle snuck out?
I think he's calmed the waters.
Could be. And?
Eric Shepherdier.
Eric Shepherdier, you're online. Anything that you'd like to speak about?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. And Jennifer Bergman, city administrator.
Couple of very brief things. Um, we were notified by the Region Five Development Commission that they were not, uh, the Initiative Foundation was not successful in receiving that grant from Deed. As you may recall, they had applied for two hundred thousand dollars to help with the, uh, remodeling of the annex. Um, I will say that Cheryl Hills called me, um, and they are, they are still wanting to move forward with this project, and she's exploring other options. In addition, Deed will have a second round of that Main Street Initiative program funding, and that will be due in February. So it is not a done deal, um, just unfortunate that they weren't funded in that first round. Um, I also was asked by the Central Lakes College to be on their comprehensive facilities plan committee, um, and so just wanted to let you know that I am participating in that, uh, looking at expansions or what they could do, uh, at CLC, both in Brainerd and in Staples. Um, the charter commission, uh, did have a meeting and decided, uh, two things happened at that meeting. One, they did hear a presentation from Evergreen Cemetery. Um, Evergreen Cemetery did make a formal request to the charter commission to, uh, include in the charter a contribution to Evergreen Cemetery. Uh, the charter commission did not move that request forward, however, instead suggested that the Evergreen Cemetery, uh, look at that, uh, new section in the charter that identifies green space, uh, that one point five, uh, percent of last year's, uh, levy, taxable value levy, thank you, Connie, um, be, uh, that they would make a request for those funds. And then the last thing, um, we did get, uh, a formal, um, letter from the Minnesota Demographer's Office on the twenty twenty census population and household counts. Uh, just thought it was interesting. Our population, I think when we had last reported, the estimate was fourteen thousand four hundred and forty. The official is fourteen thousand three ninety-five. Our household population is thirteen thousand five eighty-four. Um, we have a total of six thousand four hundred and seventy-three housing units. Um, so those were the official numbers that we received from the census.
Excellent.
And that concludes my report. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mayor Bedell?
Wonderful. I just have one item tonight, and that is, uh, I attended and was actually a participant through Brainerd Community Action as one of the, uh, organizations that helped out with, uh, the Great Pumpkin Festival. And so if you were able to attend or had children that were able to attend, I will say this, it was probably the best event that I have seen our Parks Department do in a very long time. It was biggest, it was very well-attended. Uh, the inclusion of nonprofits and organizations was fantastic. Brainerd Community Action was, uh, glad to participate. We actually, uh, did something where we had hid little wooden pumpkins throughout the park and, uh, got people walking throughout to try and find them. It was a hit, smashing success. As, uh, the executive director of Community Action, I want to just thank the Parks Department for allowing us to be a part of that. But I want to say that, uh, it, it is proof of the direction that that, uh, department is heading and that the, uh, Park Board is heading, and, uh, I think that we need to do more of those sorts of things. I think we need to understand how big of a task that is and not have one every month. You know, maybe sprinkle in some small ones every other month, maybe do three of those a year or something. But, uh, that is a direction that I am very happy to see us heading with our Parks Department, and, uh, I just want to give Katie Kaufman a huge, huge pat on the back for pulling that off. It was a, a great event, and I was really excited to be a part of it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tiffany Stengline?
Well, sure, I was also at the Great Pumpkin Festival. I saw the mayor across the way, but I was so busy, I couldn't go over and talk to him.
Looking for pumpkins, wooden pumpkins.
Well, no, I was making, um, ghosts and pumpkins out of dum-dums. That was an entirely different thing, but, um, it was an amazing event, uh, and just